Appropriations and the House Appropriations Committee. Each year, the committees are required by law to hold a series of public hearings on the governor's proposed budget. To give all of you, the citizens of Virginia, the opportunity to comment on specific issues of concern to you. Today is your opportunity to talk, and our job as legislators is to listen to you. Let me take a moment before we begin to have others, other legislators with us today introduce themselves. Staff will call out your name, and then you may state your name and the district you represent. Staff?
Yes, Delegate Austin first, Senator Hanger.
Kim, I think Senator Hanger is traveling and listening in his car, so he may have a difficult time, but he is online.
We will move on, sir. Then next I have is Senator Edwards.
Yeah, I'm here.
Would you like to introduce yourself, sir, on the district you represent?
Yeah, Senator John Edwards, the 21st Senate District, Corona Valley and the New River Valley, and I'm here.
Perfect. Delegate Rasool?
Hi, I'm Delegate Rasool, representing the 11th House District out of Roanoke. A pleasure to be here.
Thank you. And then Senator Deeds as co-chair of the meeting.
That, thank you very much. I'm Creed Deeds, I represent the 25th Senate District, and I'm anxious to hear what everybody has to say.
Perfect.
So, Kim, does that conclude our introductions?
That concludes our introductions. Delegate Austin, first in the speaking order, we have a video.
Wait, Kim, wait, Kim, we're not ready, we're not ready to move to that point in time.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to start out with a, with a few simple ground rules that will help our hearing go, the hearing today go smoothly. And at the same time, give everyone the opportunity to be heard in a reasonable amount of time. First, when you signed up to speak, you received an email with a Zoom link for the hearing. As of this morning, the House Appropriations and Senate Finance Appropriations Committee's websites were up to date to include a list of each speaker who signed up to speak along with a number. That's the order of which you will speak. Staff will from time to time call out those numbers along with the name from the signup list to give you an idea of how far we are down the list. If you're not present at your time to speak for whatever reason, then you'll be allowed to speak at the end if you are still present in the Zoom meeting. As we get closer to your number, staff will move you from the waiting area into the actual meeting room so that you can speak. However, please do not speak until your name is called. Remember to unmute yourself as soon as your name is called to minimize transition time. I will now turn this over to my co-chair, Senator Deeds, who will continue with their comments.
Thank you, Delegate Austin. I'd ask everyone to limit your remarks to three minutes or less. That way, we can be heard, we can all be heard in a reasonable amount of time, and no one will be left out. We will stay in the meeting until the last speaker that has signed up has had the opportunity to be heard. Please remember, near the end of your three minutes, a timer will sound. Please wrap up your comments at that time. After you've completed speaking, staff will move you back into the waiting room where you can continue to watch the hearing or leave altogether. Finally, to hear as many issues as possible and to be respectful of the times of others in the audience, we ask that you avoid duplication when testifying. I can tell you from years of experience that repeating the same testimony on the same issue can be counterproductive. If there are several people speaking from the same group, we encourage you to have one spokesperson. You can always mention how many other members of your group are listening to show your group's support for your calls. Not only, not only does that save time for everyone, but it's much more effective when making your case. Now, that's pretty much it. We're glad to have you here, and I hope that each one of us will learn something new today, something we hadn't thought about before. That's a big reason why we're here. Now, staff, please call out the first speaker who's number one on the list.
Yes, Senator Deeds. First on the list is Steve Grammer, and Tyler will be playing a video from Mr. Grammer.
My name is Steve from Roanoke. I am a self-advocate for the Ark of Virginia. Consumer Direct is the lowest-paying service with no benefits for in-home caregivers. I am having trouble finding attendance due to the low wages. I have already lived in a nursing home for nine years, and without caregivers, I may be forced back into a nursing home, which is against my ADA right to live in the least restrictive environment possible. I encourage you to raise the pay to at least the national average wage to make the job appealing to people. There is a caregiver shortage, and you must act now. I fully support the Ark of Virginia's legislative agenda, and I encourage you to do the same so we can have a life like yours. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Next in our speaking queue, second is Arlene Nun.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Ms. Nun.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Arlene Nun, and I live in Roanoke City. And thank you for allowing me to speak with you regarding the budget recommendations for those with developmental disabilities. My spouse and I took custody of a young man when he was three months old. Unknown to us, he was brain damaged and autistic. We sought services for him that we were not able to pay for. Eventually, he was given a waiver slot. I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. Many of his contemporaries do not have waiver, nor do they have families that have the means to seek these therapies on their own. We urge your support of the additional 500 waiver slots that we, because we have seen a huge difference in his life. And that's basically it. We support all the recommendations put forth by the ARC. And I want to take this moment, if it's appropriate, to personally thank Sam Rasool for all the support that he's given us over the years. So that's pretty much it, and I hope that you folks will, will indeed take this to heart and know that it can have a huge effect on the future of all these folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nun.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Third on our list is Margaret Hurst.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. My name is Margaret Hurst, and I am the Western Regional Manager at Childcare Aware Virginia, and I work with families and childcare providers daily to promote high quality and best practices in early education. I've worked in childcare for nearly 30 years, serving in multiple roles from direct care to mentoring teachers as well as program directors. My current role with Childcare Aware, I serve the localities between Montgomery County and Lee County to train mentors, train providers, improve quality of care, provide technical assistance as well as help them to come, become licensed and improve business practices. We also educate families on choosing quality childcare. And in our western region, some localities have very few or no licensed providers, and parent choice is limited. More funding is needed to incent those who love children to open their own childcare businesses and provide families with safe and reliable childcare in order to work. For economic recovery and growth in our state, parents need access to childcare, particularly working mothers. I have a few recommendations for consideration as the General Assembly gets underway for the new session. First, childcare workers are the workforce that supports all other workforces. While childcare is a work support, early care providers are tasked with the responsibility to promote healthy development of children, but yet for this important work, they earn a minimum wage of $12 an hour, and even with those recent increases, this continues to be one of the lowest-paid occupations that there is. And we know that the earliest years are when a child's brain is developing the fastest, the optimal time for building foundation for all other learning. And that's what makes just the work of childcare providers so important and essential. My passion for the field began when I provided essential care for 22 years at Little Saints, which was in Corillian Clinic, a childcare created to support healthcare employees. And during that time, I experienced firsthand the importance of providing childcare that was quality childcare, receiving good pay and benefits to those working in childcare. Turnover was low. We retained consistent core group of teachers for about 15 to 20 years. What's need to sustain the field is a wage supplement strategy, strategy to increase the pay for those working in childcare. Parents simply can't afford to pay any more in tuition. So what I see on the ground is a tight labor market where childcare programs cannot compete against other local businesses to recruit and retain workers. We urge the General Assembly to use some additional federal childcare dollars that Virginia has received and develop a wage supplement strategy with the Department of Education to boost childcare pay. Second, there's a childcare staffing shortage, and many childcare programs are unable to operate at full capacity and have waiting lists for children due to staff shortages. A substitute pool, which is common practice for K through 12 teachers, could help bridge this gap.
Please wrap up.
Okay, legislation to provide flexibility related to the lengthy background check process is a current barrier and would help to implement a substitute pool system and allow centers to continue to provide quality care at full capacity, which also increases revenue for providers. Thank you guys for listening today. Appreciate each of you, and I will also be submitting written comments with our full set of recommendations for General Assembly.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Next up is Christine Caldwell.
Could you unmute, please? Please unmute.
There you go. I'm Christine Caldwell. I live in Blacksburg, and I'm the president of the Ark of the New River Valley. DD waiver services are in a crisis in Virginia, and it's two-pronged. I'm here to ask you to support the, the Ark of Virginia's transformation proposals and make it a priority in the state budget this year. To that end, please, or Governor, the governor's proposed additional 500 waiver slots for the coming year and work with him to accomplish his stated aim, to provide a waiver to all people on Priority One waiver waitlist. That's a big task he's taken on, so please support it. There's still over 3,000 people on the waitlist. Here's the second part of the problem. There are not enough service providing agencies to meet the current demand for community-based services, much less the increased need when the, these new waivers are, are added this year. And when, at the DOJ settlement, Virginia made a settlement with the DOJ, and part of that was that they agreed to develop capacity to provide services to people with disabilities in their communities. Virginia has not done that. We're not close. In order to address the shortage, shortage of direct service providers for community waiver services, I urge you to support the ARC's one-time funding ask to build provider capacity. This funding would support a business startup and expansion incubator for service provider agencies, a workforce development campaign, and it would raise the wages for the supported living waiver, which is the one that would go the longest way to provide services in the community. Providers lack the support, and they need your help in expanding or, or in developing new agencies to provide the services. I think you've heard of food, food deserts in urban areas where there aren't enough grocery stores for people to get enough food. Well, I live in southwest Virginia, and southwest Virginia is a service providing agency desert. I know people just in my community, Montgomery County, who have a waiver, have had a waiver, and they cannot find anyone to provide the services. It has to be both more waivers and, and money to build capacity to support the people in the community. Virginia is the 10th most, the 10th wealthiest state in this country. Surely, we can use a little of that wealth to meet the needs of your most vulnerable citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, fifth on the list is Shay Ruff.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Shay Ruff, and I live in the city of Roanoke. And I currently work for the Ark of Virginia as a credential peer mentor and a self-advocacy coach. I would like to take the time to share some information about the peer mentoring service. The peer mentoring service provides those with developmental and intellectual disabilities the opportunity to work with a peer mentor on a specific goal that they choose to work on for a total of 60 hours over six consecutive months. Peer mentors have many years of lived experience as individuals with disabilities. The peer mentoring service is unique because it is a service that is provided both in person and virtually. Briefly, both the peer mentor and the mentee can be in two different locations with the assistance of technology. The service can be provided. The goals can range from building social skills to working on finding employment. As a peer mentor, I have seen firsthand the positive impact that the service has had on not only the mentee themselves, but their families as well. I would like to take the opportunity to share briefly a story about a mentee that I've worked with. This individual wanted to work on time management skills. We began to work together on strategies to help strengthen and build their skills. With trial and error, finding the, and with finding the right strategies for them, this mentee shared that they are now more confident and can get things done with the strategies they've learned. The family, their family themselves have shared with me that their loved one is more confident in themselves and continues to grow. Finally, I, I fully support the ARC's legislative agenda item to increase the peer mentoring rate. Peer mentoring was the only direct service left out of the DD waiver rate increases. Peer mentoring is the only service that is provided by people with disabilities. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Chair, sixth is Linda Lawrence.
Good morning. I'm Linda Lawrence, caregiver and grandmother of a young adult aged 26 with Down Syndrome, autism, and a litany of other disabilities. I ask you today to support the ARC's recommendations regarding the peer mentor pay increase as well as the additional waiver slots. I take care of my grandson, who has many disabilities on a daily basis so his mom can work and provide a career and a home for them so that when I'm no longer here, he might be able to live in a, a home or, or he, he probably won't ever live on his own. I'm not sure. We appreciate the ARC and the peer mentor program, which he's been in for over six months. Things that he should have learned probably in high school and elementary school, he did not learn. Things like time management. He doesn't get up on time. He doesn't get ready on time. He doesn't shower on time, and obviously, it, it takes a lot for a, a parent or grandparent to get to their own commitments. The peer mentor program that we've been working on is a slow, methodical process with a, with a wonderful group of people who have helped him immensely, and I can tell you from a consumer end, it's, it's a super program. And I ask that you support paying them more. They're more like elementary teachers. They have to constantly worry about whether that young adult is going to be participating, or some other mood might kick in that, that they have to constantly switch gears, and they have to constantly refresh their material in order to keep them motivated. And they are successfully doing that, and I'm here to promote it. So I thank you for everything. This is the first time I've ever spoken, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Chair, um, our seventh speaker, Jim Best, is not in the waiting room, so we'll move forward to our eighth speaker, which is Nancy Camagene.
Ms. Camagie?
Yes, Camagene, yes.
Camagene, yes, ma'am.
Am I, am I unmuted now?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, great, thanks. Good morning. My name is Nancy Camagene, and I live with my family in Montgomery County in southwest Virginia, pilot. I serve on the executive board of the New River Valley. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. First, I would like to express gratitude to the legislators for their past support of the DD waiver program. My daughter is a beneficiary of a community living DD waiver, the advantages of which include direct support providers or companions, health coverage, job coaching, and help to live independently. In other words, this waiver program has given her an opportunity to live a life like yours and mine. Unfortunately, this program is designed for failure because a waiver is only granted if there is extreme hardship or the possibility of homelessness for the person experiencing disabilities. My daughter received a waiver and remained, before that, she remained on the DD waiver list for 13 years. Um, and she, I think sure she received that waiver because my husband was diagnosed with melanoma, and I had taken a crippling fall, and I was wheelchair-bound. And it was months before my surgeries were completed. This was the most vulnerable time in our lives, and our looming worry was the fate of our daughter. The waiver saved my family's lives. I know what a difference getting that waiver meant to us. Currently, there are 3,000 folks on the Priority One waiting list. There are only 600 slots opened. Governor Glenn Youngkin added 500 more slots with a goal of eliminating Priority One waitlist by the end of his tenure. I'm asking you today, no counting on you today, to support this goal for the benefit of those in dire need and for the betterment of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Fund the DD waivers in the introduced budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Chair, ninth, we have Emily Moore.
Hi, good morning. My video is not showing. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Great. Good morning. My name is Emily Moore, and I am the policy analyst at Voices for Virginia's Children, the state's only multi-issue policy and advocacy organization focused on child and family issues. The state budget document is a reflection of our lawmakers' priorities. And while the proposed budget put forth by Governor Youngkin is a good start, there is more that you, our General Assembly members, can do when you all convene this session to support young people. The proposed budget provides a good foundation for children's mental health, child welfare, and early childhood education. However, to meet the urgent needs of young people and their families, we ask you to keep working on further investments in the budget and prioritizing kids as you all have in years past. For mental health, Virginia's children are in a mental health crisis, with more than half of middle and high school students indicating that they feel nervous, anxious, at one edge, and more than 10% of students contemplating suicide. Governor Youngkin makes significant investments in school-based mental health, crisis response services, and filling the mental health workforce pipeline. But we hope that our legislative champions will, while you will keep this in the budget, we hope that you will also consider adding funding for additional staff capacity at our local community services boards to implement new initiatives and look to leverage Medicaid funding to sustain and grow school-based initiatives. For child welfare, we are facing workforce shortages in every child-serving profession, from education to social work, and need to attract and retain caring professionals in each field. The proposed budget continues efforts from the last three years to increase salaries to attract and retain, um, social services staff, but the budget did not include proposals to attract new social work staff through the child welfare stipend program at community, at, um, universities and colleges, or to support existing staff through a training academy focused on trauma-informed care. And for family economic security, too many families are feeling economic strains, with 44% of households with children indicating that they are worried about paying for their usual household expenses this past November. With an unprecedented budget surplus, lawmakers can return some revenues back to taxpayers in the form of tax relief, especially tax relief targeted to the lowest-income families through the Earned Income Tax Credit or State Child Tax Credit. Families need flexible resources to provide stability to their children and their families. Thank you for your time this morning, and we look forward to working with you to ensure that young people and their families are prioritized and that our final budget agreement both centers and reflects the needs of everyday families here in Virginia.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chair, tenth is Ron Boyd.
Yes, uh, good morning, Chairs Austin and Deeds, Senator Edwards, Delegate Rasool, and other committee members. My name is Ron Boyd. I'm the president and CEO of LOA, the Local Office on Aging, in the 5th Planning District out of Roanoke, and the former president of the Virginia Association of Area Agencies on Aging. While Virginia's total population is expected to grow 22% by 2050, 1.9 million, our senior population age 60 and over will double over the same period, growing from 20% of the Commonwealth's population in 2020 to 31% in 2050. From the central to the southwest Virginia area, we are already well ahead of that curve, one out of four over the age of 65, and with projections by the early 2030s to be one in three. Virginia's most at-risk and vulnerable population, those 85 and over, will more than quadruple by 2050, from 157,000 in 2020 to 653,000 in 2050. The area agencies on aging serve every locality in Virginia, helping older Virginians stay in their homes as they age. The cost of AAA services are supported by a combination of federal, state, local, and private dollars. Not only is staying in their homes preferred by older Virginians, it is the most cost-effective use of resources. Virginia's 25 area agencies on aging are your frontline in supporting our older residents who want to remain in their homes or in the homes of their family members. The AAA network faces a bureaucratic dilemma in 2023. $700,000 in supplemental funding to the AAA network is needed to prevent negative impacts based on the federally required reallocation of funding between area agencies on aging. Without these funds, as was provided in past cycles, this once-decade reallocation of federal and state funds will cause uneven disruptions in services across the Commonwealth. As funds are shifted to areas where demands have grown the fastest, they will be shifted from other areas. Funds taken from a region means service reductions. A senior receiving services such as meals, in-home care, et cetera, on June 30th of this year will be at risk of not being served after July 1. State supplemental funding will be essential to keep basic services in place in some regions of the Commonwealth as funds are redistributed according to the mandated formula revisions. Area agencies on aging serve tens of thousands of Virginia each year with healthy meals, community services, services addressing social determinants of health, transportation, and other essentials. Although the required redistribution will help 14 AAAs meet their growing needs without this supplemental funding, 11 AAAs will be eliminating services to seniors. Thank you very much for giving me this time in your day.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Yes, Mr. Chair, eleventh, we have Margot Utterbach.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, ma'am.
Good, thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, mine is quick. Um, my name is Margaret Utterbach. I have a thirty-nine-year-old disabled son who lives with me. This year, I had Lanny Boyd, who is the grassroots advocacy coordinator, asked me if I would speak to the General Assembly again. So I sat down, this is a letter I wrote to her, and she asked me to send it, to read it to you. I said, Dear Lanny, I was just sitting down to get a message out to the General Assembly again, something we have done for twenty-three years, letters, visits, budget meetings, even meeting with the governor last year. We have put countless hours into this, researching facts, traveling to Richmond. Same message, never making any headway. Maybe changes are in the air, but from our perspective, nothing has changed. In fact, we learned this year that the General Assembly has been sitting on three-point-two billion dollars for years, denying us waivers. We are sixty-eight. I have cancer, and we still have no waiver. It's time for my family to plan for Stephen's future without looking to Virginia for any kind of help. I'd rather put my efforts and time into trying to make changes in the area that we live in, Harrisonburg, and support the ARC here in any way we can. My time is precious to me, and I won't be wasting it on the General Assembly. Uh, today, I'm putting time in for a visit for my family, my true support system, and those who care. Have a good day and good luck, and I did, the ARC here has been magnificent. Thank God for them. But I truly feel that it's a lost cause here in Virginia, and I'm sorry. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Utterbach.
Uh, Mr. Chair, twelfth, we have Aya Ibrahim.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, good morning. I'm Aya Ibrahim from Bodatack County in Roanoke Valley. I'm a mother to an incredible two-year-old daughter with Down Syndrome. My daughter's name is Emadi, which means my hope in Arabic. And it's my hope that we can work to improve the lives of children and adults with disabilities. I'm advocating for her today and others like her. First, I'd like to start by thanking our lawmakers for your continued support in funding the DD waivers. While we still do not receive this benefit, we know that it is a lifeline for so many, and therefore it is crucial we continue to support it until it's fully funded. I'd like to now share a little bit about our story. Our daughter Emily does not qualify for Medicaid or SSI due to our income. We are a single-income family. Despite my daughter being significantly behind her peers, she still and does not and cannot receive the DD or the CCC-plus waivers without a chronic illness or urgent need. Many doctors and others in the medical profession are shocked to hear that she doesn't qualify for any supports once she leaves early intervention at the age of three this summer. We are thus left to the mercy of insurance companies that do not cater to individuals and especially children with a lifelong disability. In fact, our private insurance company limits the number of therapies that she may receive and the number of medical devices that she can receive through a certain period of time. Here in Roanoke, through early intervention, we are blessed to currently be receiving physical occupational, speech, art, and music therapies, as well as seeing a host of specialists to monitor her as she's at an increased risk for many chronic health issues. I cannot see this level of care continuing without the support for core services program that will carry on the valuable work that early intervention starts. If we do not get core services, I fear that she will fall further behind and even lose some of the incredible progress that she has made through early intervention. I know that this is a complicated problem, but I urge you to be proactive by developing and funding core services waiver. I have heard time and time again from fellow moms that our system is waiting for our children to become severely delayed before it acts. We must be proactive and develop and fund this core services and help Emily and others like her before this happens. By supporting core services, my daughter's need for additional therapies outside of school once she's three that are absolutely crucial, and the medical devices like her walker and her foot brace would be covered by Medicaid. Core services would enable our children with disabilities to be better supported early on and without interruption, leading to their future success and independence, which will ultimately cost our state much less. Again, please support core services for those who qualify for the DD waiver waitlist. I'd like to end by saying I support the ARC of Virginia's legislative agenda, and I commend the ARC for their unparalleled support of children and adults with intellectual disabilities. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Ibrahim.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thirteenth on the list, we have Beth Sellers.
Good morning. My name is Beth Sellers. I'm a single working parent of three individuals with disabilities in Harrisonburg, Virginia. We're very fortunate that all of my children have already been allocated DD waiver slots. Like many children and even many adults in this rural area, my children have access to only one waiver service, consumer-directed personal attendant care. It's been a struggle to find a personal care attendant willing to provide the necessary care for the hourly rate, but we found and trained two attendants, and appendix K provisions have allowed me to provide services as a parent provider to my youngest daughter who is homebound. Parent pay has allowed me to leave my full-time job at an office and work part-time from home with a flexible schedule so that I'm always available for my children. This waiver service literally keeps our family functional, as well as so many other families in our area who can't access any other waiver service. So I implore you to prioritize the reimbursement rates for consumer-directed and agency-directed services. Despite our gratitude for their attendant care, my older children have requested other waiver services that they have been unable to access. I call these paper services. On paper, it looks like they should have access to a myriad of services, community engagement, respite, assistive technology, environmental modifications, private-duty nursing, et cetera. But in reality, these services are not available to them. After three years of trying to access private-duty nursing for my middle daughter, we simply gave up and learned to make consumer-directed services work for her, which did take some creativity. There are many reasons nursing is inaccessible, but the two biggest are, one, lack of providers, and two, low reimbursement rates. We thought we'd be able to access nursing when we overcame that first barrier, but then we started talking about billing with the providers. "We won't bill DD waiver," the agency said. "The reimbursement rates are too low." They encourage us to just get rid of her waiver and go back to an MCO. Of course, we can't do that, both due to the services she needs now and the home and community-based services that she will need in the future. Individuals with disabilities in Virginia just can't give up a waiver. That waiting list is too long. Both of my older children also applied for community engagement several years ago, but a jumpstart grant didn't happen, and now there are no providers for community engagement for minors in this area, and so few providers for adults that waiting lists are miles long. You already know the reasons. It generally boils down to lack of staff, lack of providers, and reimbursement rates that simply can't sustain the needs of the programs. And finally, environmental modifications. It's been very expensive to modify our home and primary vehicle to allow three individuals with physical disabilities to live as independently as possible in our family home. The annual five-thousand-dollar limit on environmental modifications has made it difficult to utilize these funds. We were granted five thousand dollars twice over the years, but the total cost on home mods has been exponentially greater. I encourage you to support a budget amendment that would combine the spending caps for assistive technology, environmental modification, and home-based electronic supports. Environmental modifications are often large, expensive projects, but they're not done frequently. So combining the annual allocation would better allow these funds to support projects like ours. So in summary, my children and I thank you for your time today and encourage you to consider the needs of individuals with disabilities and prioritize these things and support the ARC of Virginia's legislative agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the fourteenth speaker on our list, Leon Boyd, is not in the room with us, so we will move forward to our fifteenth speaker, Courtney Hayes.
Good morning. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Courtney Hayes. I am the Habitat Connectivity Program Director at Wild Virginia, a grassroots nonprofit working to protect Virginia's drivers and wildlife from wildlife vehicle collisions. And first, I wanted to thank you very much for your time and for the General Assembly's great leadership and work in 2020 in passing the Wildlife Corridor Action Plan. Today, I'm asking for funding support to support the outcomes of that plan. Um, so Virginia is the thirteenth most dangerous state in the nation for wildlife vehicle collisions, and I personally have experienced one just two months ago. Even as somebody who is very aware of this issue and dedicates her career to stopping it, I still was unable to avoid a deer vehicle collision, but thankfully, I was not hurt. Five hundred thirty-three million dollars is spent by Virginians every single year on wildlife vehicle collisions and those costs. Um, not to mention, in southwest Virginia alone, there are, is a reintroduced elk population that a new highway is being built corridor queue that threatens people because these elk are huge, and then the elk that we have spent money reintroducing. So funding for this issue would go to protect both drivers and wildlife in that area. Um, I wanted to also point out that this funding is crucial this time because of the Infrastructure, Jobs, and Investment Act Wildlife Crossings Pilot Program that will start to be released this year, and it requires a state-matching fund. So in order for Virginia to continue its leadership in this field and protecting drivers and wildlife, we would need to invest some money to be able to leverage that three-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars becoming available to us. I wanted to thank you very much for your, thank you very much for your time today, and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the sixteenth speaker on our list, Billy Campbell, is not in the room with us, so we will move forward to our seventeenth speaker, Tamara Lowery.
Kim, I believe Tamara Lowery is also not in the room.
Okay, moving forward to our eighteenth speaker, Matthew Huggins.
Um, hello, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, good morning. Um, I thank you for the chance to speak with you about Peer Mentoring, a service funded by Medicaid. My name is Matthew Huggins, and I live in Montgomery County, Virginia. I am very proud to say that I work with the ARC of Southside as a peer mentor. I also serve on the Board of the ARC of the New River Valley. Um, yes, uh, yes, Peer Mentoring is a program in which people with disabilities help other people with disabilities. Peer mentors have gone through training with the ARC of Virginia. Peer mentors are more experienced in getting through life's hardships, and we help the person we work with to do the same. We also, we also offer our companionship and encouragement. And what I mean by this is, um, I worked with a person who had never cooked anything in her whole life. And, you know, every so often, we'd have cooking days, and now she knows how to cook a bunch of stuff, which makes me proud, because, you know, before last year, she had never picked up a frying pan, she'd never done anything. And, a- 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 and now she knows how to cook a couple things. And, uh, and like, when I first met this person, they were very sheltered, and now they're all bubbly and stuff, and they want to talk all the time and stuff. So, yeah, Peer Mentoring is very important. I strongly support the ARC of Virginia's budget item that would increase the peer mentor pay rate. Peer mentoring was the only Medicaid service that did not get a waiver rate increase last year. That makes us feel like we are being treated like second-class citizens. That happens a lot to people with disabilities, sadly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huggins. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, next on our list, our nineteenth speaker is Keith Perrigan.
Good morning. I'm Keith Perrigan, and I serve as superintendent of Bristol, Virginia Public Schools. Additionally, I serve as the president of the Coalition of Small and Rural Schools of Virginia and as an officer of the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. I want to thank the House Appropriations and the Senate Finance Committees for holding regional public hearings regarding the governor's recommended budget. The budget decisions, as you know, that will be made in Richmond in the coming weeks will be lived, implemented, and felt on a daily basis by teachers, staff, but most importantly, by students for the next year and a half. So we certainly appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about our ideas and to advocate for Virginia's most valuable resource, our children. Additionally, I would like to thank the General Assembly for the historic investment that was made last year in public education. Funding for school infrastructure, teacher raises, and increasing the at-risk add-on have gone a long way towards leveling the playing field for Virginia students as we prepare them to compete in an evolving global economy. That historic investment will make the additional strides that need to occur in public education funding easier to attain. We hope that the upcoming budget will continue to prioritize teacher compensation and school infrastructure. We also ask that the support cat that was instituted during the Great Recession be completely lifted and that the standards of quality be fully funded. Although we are making strides to provide instruction to ensure that the unfinished learning caused by the pandemic is completed, schools, classrooms, teachers, families, and communities cannot bridge these learning gaps without adequate resources and funding. However, one of the most important budget decisions that will be made during the session this year revolves around mental health. We were already facing a mental health crisis before the pandemic, and COVID-19 only served to exacerbate the issue. Combined with the restrictive regulations from DMAS that withheld important services from the students and families who need them the most, the current state of mental health is approaching a breaking point. Obviously, providing additional funding for student mental health is one solution, but there are other ways to address this critical concern that are budget-neutral. For example, J-LARC recently recommended that the requirements for school psychologist licenses be amended. This flexibility could help assist the sixty-seven percent of high school students who report it being anxious, nervous, or on edge. Additionally, removing arbitrary restrictions and bureaucratic red tape caused by unnecessary DMAS regulatory changes can help ensure that the thirteen percent of students identified in that same J-LARC report as having recently considered suicide can access the services they need and deserve. It is paramount that the twenty-three, twenty-four state budget include additional funding resources and flexibility to help our schools, help our families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kayla, for your comments, sir.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, twentieth on the list, we have Martin Mash.
Hello, everyone. My name is Martin Mash. I am the Network Program Director for VOCAL, which is a statewide mental health advocacy and education organization. Uh, we are committed to ensuring that people with mental health concerns receive adequate treatment and are treated fairly by the system. Uh, we wanted to let you know that we support many of the governor's two-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar budget amendments, which include eight-point-five million to fund behavioral workforce education, nine million to increase telehealth to schools and colleges. Uh, we also support the community service boards receiving one, a hundred and sixty-two million to provide recruitment and retention bonuses for direct care positions. Uh, we think that the fifty-eight million to increase the number of crisis-receiving centers is positive. We support the twenty million in one-time funding for mobile crisis to cover the state, eight million in support of housing, uh, twenty million for hospital-based emergency care, and fifteen million for school-based services. We believe these investments would go a long way to improving the infrastructure of the mental health system, and we're grateful for your time and consideration, and it's nice to see you, Kim.
Mr. Mash, thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, next on the list, we have Jack Luff.
Hey there. Um, my name is Jack Luff. I'm a graduate student and Jewish person living in Christiansburg, Virginia, as well as a longtime community organizer who's made over half a billion dollars worth of policy changes in my respective area uh, over the next ten years around the issues of economic and environmental justice, which I'm passionate about. Uh, I want to speak as a, as a young voter and point to a perspective shift that's happening among younger voters in this region, as well as across the country. There is an increased emphasis among young voters that politics have failed us and specifically have failed to address systemic injustices that have removed opportunities from everyone but the wealthiest elites. Budgets are effectively a statement of government priorities and values, and I am urging elected officials here to treat the budget documents and amendments as such and embrace a set of progressive policies in their budget commitments. First and foremost, I want to speak on a couple of issues. Uh, I know it's a standing budget item and not part of the amendment package, but I want to encourage the removal of funds for the Virginia-Israel Advisory Board, or VIAF. While it is a relatively small budget item, all things considered, it represents an investment in an apartheid regime that has been widely denounced for its human rights abuses. Uh, last year, the graduate students at Virginia Tech took a vote around the issue of boycotting Israel and democratically voted to reject our, uh, relationship with the apartheid state while it's carrying on human rights abuses in solidarity with Palestinians in Virginia and around the world. I mentioned this vote because it represents seven thousand young voters in the region who believe that this is a fundamental issue and that we need to take a stand on it. Um, as an aside, just because there's legislators here, I was the target of the largest anti-Semitic attack in our campus's history. That's Virginia Tech's campus, uh, as a result of me spearheading this campaign. And yet, the governor's executive order eight policy recommendations only support those who attacked me rather than protect Jews like me. So when those bills come out, I highly encourage folks to vote them down while I have the floor. Uh, I'd like to now quickly run through a high-level list of items that I encourage officials to vote down and put some potential sites to help redirect those funds. First, any increase in police budgets for training, equipment, or personnel is just going to exacerbate already-bloated security budgets, racial violence, and remove funding from programs that actually meaningfully reduce poverty and community violence. We should be working to pare down police budgets, and yet every level of government persists in funding them, including the state, uh, despite no evidence that in- including the state, despite no evidence that increased funding leads to improved outcomes for communities. And in fact, it is the opposite. We also need to reduce any support for natural gas or oil pipelines, especially the Mountain Valley Pipeline Project, and invest more heavily in renewable energies. I was pleased to see some of these provisions among the budget amendments and the budget itself, yet I still notice that we're kowtowing to big energy companies rather than to the public interests. Lastly, I want to encourage people to vote against any tax cuts for the wealthy. The wealth gap is horrible, especially in southwest Virginia, where we have a long history of coal magnets exploiting the community. And anyone who votes to cut tax for the wealthy is not an ally to rural areas, full stop. We need to invest heavily in public education at all levels. Our funding for public schools and higher educations is pitiful and causing us to lag significantly behind our peer states and institutions. Again, I was pleased to see some provisions for education in the budget, but it needs to be vastly improved instead of providing billion-dollar tax cuts for the wealthy and businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Luff, for your comments.
Yes, Mr. Chair, 22nd on our list is Terry McGuire.
Good morning, can you hear me?
We can, sure.
Thank you for your time, everyone. I appreciate it. My name is Terry McGuire. I live in the city of Roanoke. And I'll be brief, per Senator Deeds' request that we not be duplicative. I wanted to echo the comments from Courtney Hayes with Wild Virginia. I'm a volunteer with them and here today as a supporter. And I wanted to echo the ask that you include funding for Wildlife Crossing Corridors, building off of the bipartisan wildlife, excuse my computer froze up, building off of the Virginia's Wildlife Quarter Action Plan that was passed with bipartisan support in 2020. As I mentioned, I live in Roanoke. I've got a lot of family in Franklin County, Bodatot, and I also travel to the New River Valley a lot. And so I can, and as someone who's been involved in a wildlife vehicle accident, I can tell you, and if you've been in one, you know, it's really terrifying. And the numbers show that there is almost a half a billion dollars in cost to Virginians each year because of these accidents. So I encourage you to allocate some money so that we can support implementation of the Virginia Wildlife Quarter Action Plan and also, as Courtney mentioned, make ourselves eligible to receive some of that $350 million in federal funding. I think it's a good investment, bipartisan, common sense thing to do that would be important for Virginians across the state because I know this is an issue that all Virginians deal with. So I thank you for your time and hope that you'll include that and appreciate all of your work and leadership.
McGuire, we thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, 23rd on our list is Annie Woodruff.
Good morning. My name is Annie Woodruff. I'm from Lynchburg, Virginia. I'm a home care worker, a taxpayer, a voter, and a proud member of a union here in Virginia. I'm here to speak in support of quality home care for the elderly and disabled and for a good union job for the home care workers. Home care workers like me provide essential care for the elderly and disabled. We save the state money and keep medical costs down by keeping people out of costly nursing homes and emergency rooms. The pandemic has proven the importance of our work. I've been a home care worker for 10 years. I'm presently sitting with a 90-year-old, bedridden lady with dementia. I help her by bathing her, keeping her changed and dry, feeding her, and make sure she have her medication. I sit with her seven hours a day, five days a week. With my help, her family is able to work and take care of their daily needs and keep her at home rather than a nursing home. Being a central worker, care worker, is important to me because it helps her and others to live at home and provide them with some quality of life. Thank you for supporting the raises, pay leaves, hazard pay, waiver slots in recent years. By investing in home care during the pandemic, you kept people out of nursing homes and saved lives. We still have a care crisis because of inflation and the lack of full benefit. It makes it difficult for care workers to stay in jobs and for the elderly and disabled to find the necessary care they need. Personally, I struggle with the low pay, no benefits, and paid leave. That's why I'm asking General Assembly to fund the following items in this year budget. 10% raise or more, 10 days of paid leave, and restore the 720 hours of care respite that Virginia families rely on. Funding raises, paid leaves, and respite hours are important steps towards addressing the care crisis. Home care workers like me need a seat at the table through collective bargaining to ensure that Virginia has the quality home care system we all deserve. Thank you and look forward to working with you in Richmond this session. Thank you.
We thank you, Ms. Woodruff.
Yes, Mr. Chair, 24th on our list is Angela Mahu.
Good morning. Good morning. How is everyone?
We're well. We hope you are.
Yes, sir, I am. Thank you very much. I'm Angie Mahu. I live in Franklin County. But I work in Gladys, Virginia. I spend majority of my time there. No matter what my time sheet says, I take care of a double amputee. He was literally my saving grace as much as I was for him. I belong to the SEIU Union, I have 12 here in Virginia. And I'm so happy that they found me because there's so much that we all need to do. I've got notes everywhere, but I was told, you know, Angie, just tell your story. Well, I'm a 50-year-old mom. I was widowed. He had myelofibrosis cancer. There's this, so much that y'all have done. Y'all really helped us out. But with the pay raise in it, it was pretty much like giving it right back away. I mean, I've got numbers here, just with 40 hours a week, which we do have respite hours and I'm thankful to get those. But with 40 hours a week with our pay, that's $26,416 a year. Well, I drive, I was driving two hours, but then I hit a deer. They were talking about that. I hit two deer, actually. Went 30 foot down an embankment, broke my pelvis in multiple places, broke my hip, my neck in two places, ripped my nose halfway off, gashed my head open. So that was, that was rough and it, it hurt my new husband and I. We just got married beginning at 21. It's kind of hard to get caught back up once you get down that far. I have moved an hour closer to go help Mr. Williams. But even at $3 a gallon, even if I go five days a week, that's $7,800 a year just in gas. That's not tires or oil or anything else I need for the vehicle. It's not insurance. Insurance alone is $366 a month now because of my accident Jeep payment. It's hard to make ends meet. My husband was, he was laid off due to COVID. We were married, what, three months and he was laid off? It's hard to get caught back up. But as a caregiver, it's so much more than just caring for someone. It's you take care of their life, everything to try to keep them upbeat. Because you know, until you put yourself in someone else's shoes, there's no way to know what they're going through. And there is so much that goes on with my life that, I'm sorry, that I put on the back burner because he doesn't need, my patient, my double amputee, he doesn't need it. You know, he's got his own demons to fight every day. And so I do my best, we all do our best to try to keep them at home, keep their mental health well, keep them, keep their dietary needs met, make sure he takes his medicine. But through the union, we need to do what we can to join together all the different areas of the whole community. I think that unity is necessary. We have to look out for each other. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Mahu, we thank you for telling your story and joining our call today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe we've heard from the 25th person on our sign-up list, Annie Woodruff. And the 20, I don't see the 26th person on our sign-up list, Heather Demon, in the room with us. So we will move forward to our 27th speaker, Lauren Sherwood.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you all and thank you all for your service to Virginia. I'm Lauren Sherwood. I live in Bodatot County. And I want to talk to you a little bit about consumer-directed Medicaid waiver services rates. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Moms in Motion, which is the largest provider of CD services in Virginia. We'd like to call you to action to support a fix for the five consumer-directed Medicaid waiver service rates and to support an amendment to the budget that would correct the rates and bring them up to the 50th percentile BLS rates that were recommended by the Burns and Associates Rates Rebay Study last year, with those services falling below the current 12.5%. As you all know, CD services were created in 2005 to help people direct their own care and make their own choices. The state did not have the capacity to administer these services themselves and so they opened it into sort of a public partnership with private providers. Services facilitators administer these services in order to help people find, hire, manage, train, and retain good personal care attendants. Services facilitators help people become their own employers of record, ensuring their authorizations for services are getting approved, that their needs are being met, and that they are safe in their home and in their community and that their attendants are getting paid properly through fiscal agents. Since 2005, the five CD services have received only one rate increase last year and it was 12.5%, which equates to about 0.7% per year. That's not enough for us to keep up with the minimum wage increases, inflation, cost of living increases, additional administrative burden, and so on. CD services were included along with the other 30-plus DD waiver services in the recent Burns and Associates Rate Rebay Study. The BNA recommendation for CD services was an average rate increase of 69%, which would bring them up to the 50th percentile of the BLS. Instead, we received 12.5%. CD services were left out of the DD waiver services in the last session that received the BNA recommended rates. Please support the amendment that will fix consumer-directed Medicaid waiver services rates and bring them up to the BNA recommended 50th percentile rates, ensuring none of them fall below the current 12.5%. Virginians with disabilities need these services and we need to be able to continue to provide them so that individuals can correct their, can direct their own care. Thank you so much for your time.
Ms. Sherwood, we thank you for your comments today. Ms. McKay, I think that concludes our list, although I think there were four members who were not in, four guests who were not in the room when you called upon them. Would you like to go back and see if they're now available to make comment?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. We'll start in order. So the first person on that list is Jim Best and I believe he's with us in the room.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Best?
Thank you so much. I hope you can hear me good. My name is Jim Best from Meadows of Dan. For most of the past 50 years, I've served five counties and hospitals in southwest Virginia as a speech-language pathologist and enjoyed 16 years as a scout leader from Tiger Cubs to Explorer Scouts, including all of the adventure bases. Since returning from Israel and the occupied territories, I've engaged with more than 10,000 Jewish, Christian, and Muslim Virginians in 19 organizations across the Commonwealth through the Virginia Coalition for Human Rights. The self-determination election in South Africa ended apartheid in 1994. Our Congress has passed the Comprehensive Anti-Apartheid Act in 1986, promoting boycotts, divestments, and sanctions in accord with U.S. history that rejected tyranny by dumping tea into the Boston Harbor. Previous Virginia administrations have welcomed the influence of a foreign country touted as a benefit to Virginians by the creation of a unique advisory board, which states, "The Virginia-Israel Advisory Board is a government agency that helps Israeli companies build and grow their U.S. operations in Virginia, an advisory board not responsible to Virginia voters but to profit a foreign state currently seeking mass protest to its own new government and which yesterday proposed the ultimate solution for the Palestinian problem." Today, I stand with the organization of former soldiers in the Israeli Defense Force breaking the silence which exposes the most brutal and longest apartheid in modern history. In the Buddhistans of Gaza and the rest of the occupied territories, we must break the silence which silence evinces our complicity with apartheid by rejecting apartheid as in 1986. We must remove the Trojan horse of deceit called the VIAB, which promotes foreign companies such as Aquamoth and Energix, which in the last four years has attempted to establish 23 commercial solar utilities in Virginia, only eight of which are in operation because of resulting lawsuits, litigation for use of PPP funds, environmental racism in Henry County, and more than $90,000 in DEQ fines, refusal to divulge a contract with First Solar for decommissioning of solar panels containing a human carcinogen, cadmium telluride, or any plan to restore solar sites for Virginia agriculture, even proposing that 35-year-old solar panels can be resold for a profit on eBay. Before the stench of this time bomb is laid in the lap of the current administration, break the silence, the simplicity with this abuse of Virginians. Regulate the VIAB with existing Virginia laws or cut the purse strings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Best.
Yes, Mr. Chair, next on the list, we have Leon Boyd. And if for some reason you're in the attendee room under a different name, just raise your hand so Senate IT can bring you over into the main room. Mr. Chair, I don't see any hands go up for Mr. Boyd. So next on the list, we have Billy Campbell, and I believe I see him in this room with us.
Yes, thank you. My name is Billy Campbell. Owner and operator of Southern Gap Outdoor Adventures in Grundy, Virginia, down here in far southwest Virginia. We are a hospitality and adventure park that serves both ATV users, hikers, and wildlife enthusiasts, tourists that would desire to come into our area. I'm here today to show my support as a private entrepreneur for the Wildlife Corridor Action Plan. There have been massive efforts in the coalfield region to diversify our mainly energy-based economy to include outdoor recreation and wildlife viewing tourism economies. With local investments in Buckanning County already exceeding $40 million to develop lands adjacent to and around newly constructed US 121 and US 460, which is Corridor Q, we begin to see commercial, residential, industrial, recreational, and educational facilities constructed along this corridor. Non-resident visitor numbers for the nearby breaks in our state park exceeds 100,000 visitors per year. And our own outdoor adventure park sees non-resident visitors exceeding 30,000 visitors per year. Our county, Buckanning County's motto is to embrace the wild. The reason we say this is that we've seen an explosion of wildlife resurgence. We've seen reclaimed surface mine areas provide excellent habitat and conservation groups working diligently to return these wildlife populations to our area. These resurgences have included the efforts of State DWR to introduce elk into our region. As we've seen these actions come together, we need to ensure that with increased traffic, increased wildlife along these newly constructed mountaintop highway corridors, that we need to ensure the safety of highway users remains top of our list. Here in the wild, wild, western part of the state, vehicle wildlife encounters are high. As we have already, as which has already been stated, my understanding is that Virginia ranks 13th most dangerous nation in vehicle wildlife interactions. Our region would like to see the state-level financial commitments to provide constructive wildlife corridors intersecting the new road corridors in the region. These corridors would provide overpasses or culverts beneath the roadway that allow wildlife to safely pass from one side to another without crossing flow of traffic. DWR and Wild Virginia have identified up to $350 million in federal funding which could be used to begin these projects. As little as $5 million in state funding to help leverage the ask for the $350 million, $350 million in federal grants. Our elk population will continue to attract outside visitors to our area. Sections of the new Corridor Q, 121 and 460, mountaintop corridors will be opening within the next year to traffic flow out of Kentucky into Buckanning County and our region of the state. It's imperative that we move quickly to identify and fund immediate projects that lead to the eastern, that lead in the eastern U.S. and being and being proactive in making our roads safe and protecting our efforts in diversifying our economy to include a wildlife resource economy. Thank you for hearing me today. I appreciate it.
Mr. Campbell, we thank you for your comments.
Yes, Mr. Chair, next on our list is Tamara Lowry. So if Tamara Lowry is with us and under a different name in the attendee room, raise your hand and I will move you over. I, I do not see any hands go up, sir, so I don't believe Ms. Lowry is with us. The last person on our list is Heather Demon. So if Heather is with us as an attendee and raises her hand, and she's with us under a different name, I'll grab her and bring her into the room with us. I do not see any hands go up, so I don't believe she is with us. So that concludes our speaking list for today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. I'm going to begin with my closing comments, and Senator Dees will follow with his. I would like to thank everyone in attendance today. As the Vice Chairman of House Appropriations, I assure you your concerns will be taken seriously. We will address your concerns at the appropriate time during the budget negotiations. And once again, I thank you and I thank my colleagues for their time today and listening to our constituents. This is very important, folks, and we very much appreciate your participation. I now defer to co-chair, Senator Dees.
Well, thank you, Delegate Austin. Thank you, Delegate Rasul and Senator Edwards. Senator Hanger was here part of the time, and I'm grateful for everybody's attendance. Thank you to those people who chose to speak. Your input is incredibly helpful to us as we craft a budget, amendments to the budget for this year. Your government only works as well as you allow it to work. Your input is critical to this process, so I urge you to stay on top of the issues, stay in touch with us, continue to be squeaky wheels, and let us know what your point of view is all the time. Thank you so much.
So thanks, everyone, and this concludes our meeting.